All right. We'll call our city council special meeting. This is January the 24th at 6:35 or 6:30. With that, we have the roll call.
Mayor Ikorst.
Mayor.
Acting Mayor Phillips.
Here.
Counselor Bergner.
Yeah.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Counselor Kros.
So we have agenda. The special city council meeting, there is no public forum. We'll follow our agenda unless there's any amendments or corrections to it. So you may make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor? Seeing as everybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so tonight we're continuing our EPA introduction meetings. This is our third meeting. And I appreciate everybody that did come out tonight and we'll start through our I guess it's components of enabling resolution, which I think will be done at the February 24th city council meetings. Would you like to?
I will.
Just gonna talk real slow.
Page six is really the the sub-agenda for tonight. I hope everybody had a chance to look through that stuff. We kind of decided by mutual consent, actually it was a vote, I think. Perhaps not, but there was consensus for order seven.
Right.
For this group and that was at the December 20th meeting.
Yes.
So that, that piece is done. And with that selection, we need two council members to serve on that. And, and again, tonight is more discussion and process, understanding that. And then the real actions will be taken by council at the February 21st. February 21st meeting. Oh yeah, I have that on there. And there's a public hearing that has to be held for that as well. So those are are the, the pieces. So the first one is confirmation on the EDA board size. I, was there any further discussion since we decided?
We had a good conversation.
That's a good one.
Okay. And then designating the council liaisons and naming the executive director.
So as far as the council representatives, I would like to be one of those council members. For a couple of reasons. One is just my background with the water and sewer, the sewer project. I think that's important to be able to be very familiar with it as we develop our going forward, so. At the same time, I would also like to see Dana as a possible council delegate also. I think she brings, she's been on the council three years, but she's been a resident since 2011. 2011, 2012. And I think that it's important to get a good cross-section of the age demographics on the on the EDA board as well, so. I would like to see her on it as well.
If, from my perspective, I'm, that makes sense certainly. Not to you, but, but I know that you have a really creative background. And that marketing piece and is, is gonna be important for this group. It's unlike the planning and zoning where it's all pretty black and white and driven by the code book. The EDA has more flexibility and opportunity for the creativity piece, so I totally support that. And we only have five and those two are on planning and zoning and.
I, I think that's a good cross-section too, for you to be involved with that Dana. You know, where, you know, you kind of wonder what's going on and that way you're kind of all connected with, with what needs to be done. And I think it's a good cross-section of what there is, or what we have here for council for, for that type of, of of interaction that there is. And, and with, with you mayor. Just the knowledge that you have and the number of years that you've been on council. You know, and, and that knowledge that you've got, you know, makes a lot of sense for, for that to be a good fit that I, I would think with that. So, you know, I think that, that, that makes sense. I think that'd be good.
I agree.
Right.
Is it something you want to do?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. It, it is that creative side that excites me and the the dreaming. It's, you know, and just the fact that I work with so many different different organizations in the community, volunteer-based organizations in the community, and I feel like I have a good idea of, of a lot of people's needs. I hear a lot of different people and what talk to a lot of different people, so I think I could bring some of their voices to the table too.
Excellent. And I, I agree with what's been said with regard to the mayor too. The only my only concern is perception. Because the two of you live on well, your neighbors, you know what I'm saying? And the same with you guys, you know, that you're on the other side, right? So, so that's the only piece where I draw hesitation in terms of makeup of the communities or the committees, but I know you, we can probably offset that by virtue of the other members that serve.
Right.
Right. I was gonna say the same.
You know, currently our planning and zoning is made up of a lot of people from the west side. You know, so it kind of just happens, it just happens. It's almost like not obviously on purpose.
Right.
And I think one of the main goals, one of, we've had this discussion with Gold Rush and we just had our parks meeting with Kevin who came to the meeting. One of our goals has always been, and I think the community since 52 split it, is to bring the two sides together. So that would be a really important goal for the, for the EDA and it should be for planning, zoning, parks and everybody, you know? Cause there definitely is a hard, it makes it hard having that highway running through the middle of our town.
It's like drawing the land, finding the sand. And I, and I, it's entirely up to council in the decisions that it makes. I'm just throwing that out there from a perspective.
I would, I would agree with what you're saying Sunny, but I think to your point, I think we can equalize it out with other, the other members that are that, you know, become the others that become the members.
They just want to be mindful of it and, but the caveat to all that is you can only go with the people that apply, right?
Right.
So that's, that's always.
Now, there was also the, the thing that was mentioned too on the length of time with, with CETA depending upon what the election is of the council members. Okay, and, and who's up too? Cause I, I did read some of that, that was in there.
Well, it was one, two, you know, everybody is assigned one year at a time, one, two, three, four.
Yeah, cause that was kind of in, if we're, we're good together when there is.
The turnover will happen, not fast, but over the first six years, it'll be changing quite a bit.
I mean, yeah, that goes for all of us that are sitting here.
Right, exactly, exactly.
And just for a point of clarification, CETA is that group that we hired to work for us. They're under contract. But this is, this is an EDA. And so I, I know like in Jordan, it became GETA. And you know, in the different cities, I understand that it takes the, so there may be other CETAs or cities whose names start with a C, but or an S, if you were, you know, how you pronounce it. But, but just for a point of clarification, this would be OEDA. Or the Orinoco.
Orinoco, you're right, okay.
You don't like OEDA.
So as you look at Russian's page, this is occurs after the board has been identified?
Right. Much of it will be. That, and that's why I, I narrowed it down to in terms of the actual agenda. But I wanted you to be aware of the work that the board will be doing.
Does everybody get a copy of this page six so that they know what's going on?
No, because.
We could make a copy of at least that so that they can kind of.
Oh yeah, sure.
So at least they're aware of everything that's going on.
Yeah, ultimately it becomes a, and the link is on the agenda. So you can feel free to, to go there and look at that document. Ultimately.
Can I make a copy of that stuff from here now or? I just think it might fit in with everything we're referencing.
Ultimately, that becomes the work of the board itself, once council does its part in terms of defining what's gonna go in that enabling resolution. And I think there was a copy of that, a sample, right?
Well, did Chris give us? He gave us an example.
Chris had given one and I was wondering, and I set that aside too.
Job description.
The fact in here in the handbook is a description of everybody.
The resolution enabling the creation of economic development authority in the city of Orinoco, Poltik County was the page. It was from the material that he gave us back in September probably.
Right. And there's one in here too is at page 41. I'm guessing. I'm sorry, I missed both. The one we want to look at is.
Thank you, Randy.
Yeah. Sampling bylaws and enabling resolutions begin at page 34. So we did the we scheduled this public hearing. That's been posted as cause wish. And then the, at page 38, there's an extract of minutes for the city council that includes an embedded enabling resolution. So you kind of have your typical recitals. Then the citation as from statute that's going to support that. And then delegation of powers.
So this the resolution that Chris shared with us.
Right.
So is that the one we would follow or one of these papers?
I'm, I'm thinking we'll end up going more with something like this that's gonna have a little bit more meat in it. And that'll be part of your council package. And I'll send that out, I can send that out in advance.
Yeah, we'd appreciate it. So if you go back through, so I don't remember exactly which meeting, but it was a reservation that Chris shared with us. Probably in some place.
I think that goes back to
Did that go along with the great deal that was that a part of that?
Yeah, it was part of that. He gave us examples.
Yeah.
And work plans from Chatfield and Stewart Hill.
I think there might be the people here that might have questions that weren't here before. Even on what's going on.
Happy to hear. I'm sorry. I'm happy to answer questions if the chair is willing to enter. But at this point, it's still comfortable discussion.
I think we're I was hoping we could my goal was to keep the meeting to an hour or less, so. I don't think there's anything I mean, there's other things on our agenda, but I think that's fine if we want to open it up for some other comments.
Yeah, the, and it is real short in terms of what's, what's going on is as city administrator, I'm happy to be the executive director. If that's acceptable to councils. And we've already decided on the two appointees and the question then in that first for the first board is, do we want to align your terms then with what's left on your terms council? You know what I'm saying? I'm sorry?
It's the same.
No. Well, it would be, you're both up to two years, right?
We'll all be up for reelection. So then that's.
Not, not that Jim, that Jim.
Yeah.
Jim and I remember that same thing. So.
So I'll, I'll check into how that's gonna work in the staggering of terms, all this. Renewing. So that's 94 for you.
My question when reviewing the packet, which I left my notes at home later, but the treasurer job looks quite complicated. Is that, and I don't believe you can be the treasurer and the executive director, or can you be?
In the book, the secretary and the treasurer don't have to be, they can be, they don't need to be on the board. I read the handbook correctly.
I thought you needed a treasurer and an assistant too, basically.
Oh, no, I don't remember.
Again, I left my notes. So, and it just it looked like a big job, so.
Yeah, and that, that again, Dana, I would just say it's gonna be up to the board to decide who they would want to fill that.
It's one of the things I think we need to.
Was it a mayor or a must?
Really wish I had my notes with me.
Oh, okay, so the office and staff, president, vice president, treasurer, assistant treasurer, executive director, engineers if they wanted to hire, or other technical support staff. And a secretary.
Yes, page 10. EDA may choose to add the secretary or assistant treasurer position filled by a non-boardman. It's per Minnesota statute. So just keep, keep that in mind when you get to that point of officers.
And the treasurer.
So I guess what I'm saying is when we're choosing applicants, we need to keep that in mind, you know? It's very important.
Depending on the background, all the applications and how the best fit works. Before we leave that it's on the agenda of officers, does this be the right time to talk about applications? In the standpoint of a deadline. At least the applications are out there on the website. And so prior to.
I don't have a website, I couldn't find it.
It's at the very bottom of the.
It's on the homepage, it's the bottom for, for all the other documents past the paragraphs. So if we look so the meeting's on the 21st, it's third Tuesday. And I've sent emails out yesterday, no. Sunday or, no, Sunday, yes. There's different HOAs and Timberland, or Timber, Peter Woodlands and River Hills. And so there's awareness out there about the applications. So one thought is to maybe extend the applications, the deadline out to the February 3rd. The week from this Friday. Which is another 10 days. And.
What, our meeting is when?
The 21st.
Would we have a meeting, a special meeting before that would all be discussed then?
Well, that's that's a good question. Why don't, on the 21st is when we have the enabling resolution. Do we want to have our applications in such we, we do an interview or do we have the interview on the 21st of all the applications? And I guess that's a good question for Chris. I don't know with his experiences.
When you adopt the resolution, is that you need to have all the people who's saying, no, we're just, we're just.
You're just having the public hearing, excuse me, to to provide for public input prior to adopting the enabling resolution, which then creates the EDA. The appointments to the board can be subsequent to that.
Okay. I guess I don't know why we why we would make the cutoff so early then.
A discussion.
It'd be nice.
Give it some more time if you want.
Yeah.
No, I wasn't sure.
Meeting and we're not, if we're not going to meet before the 20 hours to discuss anything. It kind of makes more sense to just.
Make sure we have it by.
I want to make sure we have a good.
Couple of days before, so at least we can get a chance to look at them or whatever.
I misunderstood. I thought we had to point about that meeting, that's why I thought. But if we don't, there's no really urgency in doing it for the 21st.
I think it would be, I think it would be good to have it, that be, you know, honor before that date, be the deadline.
Hold the Friday before that, so that, that way we can at least get a chance to look at it over the weekend and be prepared for that Tuesday. So it would be the 18th.
Am I mistaken in understanding that the mayor alone appoints the EDA?
No, it can be done by council too, if I read what was in there.
With council approval.
Yeah, it's mayor and then council.
Fine, okay. I remember that from way back then, so I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that, okay. So then we could take the next one. Or he, would we want to have them in February? Is that what you want to do?
Well, I think it's shortly after that 17th. After, after the 21st.
So I mean, let's, let's have the cutoff date as 18th?
18th is Saturday.
It's Friday. Oh, 17th, I'm sorry, I was like, can you?
I mean, I, I want to know though, as far as getting that, adding that to the packet, that'd be a lot of work over the weekend.
Well, and, and we have, we'll have the piece scheduled on there, we'll have.
Right.
Is that timely?
Well, I mean, it is. So we want to make it on the Thursday, so at least we'll have it in for a day to be able to print.
Well, my suggestion is gonna be whether it's before the 21st. And not that you have to make a decision on the 21st. But in terms of for a special meeting is gonna, I think, be appropriate for interviews.
I'm on vacation February 23rd to 27th, so.
And who holds the interviews? All of us, the mayor, this is where I'm because it's again, from what I remember, mayor appointed and then council approved, so is it technically?
It's, that's a council decision on how they want to handle that. On one hand, like you say, the other council members need to support what, what you want to do, but you need to be part of that process as well. The two of you will be serving on that particular committee, so you'll, you'll want to make sure that you are selecting people and we can have that conversation too about, you know, what, what business backgrounds might you be looking for, not necessarily business, business. I'm just saying what, what are individuals going to bring to the table that are gonna move the EDA forward?
But with that, would we, as a council, want to put together some criteria for the different positions to say, okay, if you're treasurer, this is some criteria that you might be looking for. Let's say you want someone with an accounting or a business background and, you know, maybe one of the other roles, you know, just some baseline criteria?
Yeah, I agree. I agree. And then, you know, what, what the, the application I did was fairly generic. Thinking that more would be drawn out in the interview process. And let them tell you what they're gonna bring to the table.
I think it would be good for all council to hear that.
I agree too.
You know? Ultimately, you're picking the candidates. Right?
Right. And ultimately, I think I've said this before to the different groups. I envision that it, on a regular basis, and I don't know if that's just annually or but I, I think it's important, and I've talked to Chris about this as well. Having a joint meeting where it is planning commission, EDA and council, of course, you all serve on the others too, but, but having that joint meeting of the minds kind of to one in the initial joint session would be to see the import of how the different work that you do individually as a group meshes for the betterment of the city as a whole. So there are some unique facets to the work that you do within your commission or, or authority. But then collectively, you need, we all need to be rolling the bolt in the same direction, right? So that's, that's the goal of those kind of joint sessions.
What I'm understanding is that we will not be, we will not be ready by the 21st to make a decision on who will be appointing.
And, and I don't think you want to rush this process.
Exactly. That's exactly what I'm saying is I really want to take our time. I really want to, you know, extend it to that to get the, as many candidates as possible applying and then take our time in creating that job, basically position description and making sure that we find the people that fill it and 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 at the same time, if we don't find somebody, what's our process then? You know? What's our process then? You know, if you don't get enough people applying to a position, you've extended that. Do we do that? You know, because we certainly can't appoint somebody as treasurer who isn't qualified. Just because they applied, um, I couldn't, I, I would never want that job, you know what I mean? If I, I'm certainly not qualified, so I'm just saying that, we have to think about that too. We just have to be very careful, I think.
We could probably cross that bridge when we come to it, seeing who does apply. And see if we need to extend at that point.
I just want to, you know, I. We've had, we've had deadline issues in the past, I want to make sure that we're. That we are upfront about if we do not feel it, we have enough people that may be qualified, we will extend that deadline and just put that out there, that this is not a hard.
I think Chris mentioned too, I mean, there's, that is a possibility, but that's not to say the EDA board can't start, it's just we continue to find members.
Sure.
Build those positions.
Can you start without the seven then?
If you have a four, move four.
Okay, that's great too, then that's even better than, um.
So just to recap, what our timeline, so we're talking. So I, I've heard cutoffs and, and dates, so we can just recap, we've got others listening too.
So we're talking about a deadline of Friday.
Seventeenth.
And are we choosing a Friday for anything in particular or? Because I, I don't.
Things together for the packet for the meeting on the twenty first that we would at least.
I, I don't anticipate that being part of the council packet.
It'd be a special meeting instead.
Okay, so we're gonna do a special meeting after the twenty first or? Maybe after, okay, that's the only reason why I said the seventeenth was to try to hit the twenty first deadline, that was, that was my thinking.
Okay, so seventeenth is, is the applicant deadline? Is what you're saying?
You can put it wherever you want now, if that's, that's the only reason why I put the seventeen.
Yeah.
Was looking for us to have things in the packet for the twenty first.
Should we schedule the special meeting? And then go from there?
Yeah.
Because then you would, then you could tell us what you need, how much time you need to prepare that.
Well, I, I like either, because I'm not here on Fridays typically, so, um. The seventeenth is not necessarily all that, you know, Monday. You know, if, if they come in, you know, by Monday morning or Monday noon, I can still. Inform council of what's been received at the council meeting. Um, so that we know, I mean, I can tell you, I think I sent out.
Twenty of his presidents today.
I was just gonna say that too, are we open?
The twentieth?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, another one, here we go.
It's hard though, before the meeting. Yeah, I can see that.
Yeah, okay, so let's stick with the seventeenth then for cut off. And we'll, uh. Um, on Facebook and, and we'll put it out there and post it on, um. Bulletin boards and we. Do what we can and if you have access to other outlets, like you said, the HOAs and, um. Other, um. Citizen.
Citizen, we could post that.
Yeah, so any, anybody else, you know, those, reaching out to those, because I know one, one thing that you have mentioned before is. Is that we, we, and this is not atypical to Orinoco, it happens often that. Those most involved are most involved and, um. And we, we want to open the door to as many people as we can in Las Vegas. Um, so that, so that the bulk of the load isn't always being carried by the same people.
Yeah, outside of. City Hall and chambers.
Right.
Yeah.
One thing I would like to just, just have a discussion about is the possibility of. Uh, well, two things, you know, do we include a planning and zoning commissioner on board? Two, should we consider. Including a township resident. Regardless of if they have a business or property in town. Um. I can see benefits of both of those things, I think the P and Z is. It would be nice to have that. Working relationship together, um, at the same time, I know it's, you know, they have, they're so specific in like the black and white and the code. Um, but it would just be nice to have that open communication.
Mm hmm.
Working relationship.
I think to that point, Chris had even said about having someone, possibility of having someone from like Rochester or, you know, a neighboring town. Right? That there's that possibility, so I think it would be good to have someone from.
I, I think that the township, me and all this.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just saying that the township, you know, might make sense. Because it could involve. Changing from what the city is to the township and what we incorporate or bring in into Orinoco. Might have an effect on it with the township.
I, I just, we have a, you know, our community is fairly small, like sixteen hundred and township's really, really big. And in fact, you know, the township has a lot, um. Of people that. Will be coming to our businesses that we have, I mean, they come to the ones we have now and I would assume they will be coming and, and, um. Could bring a unique voice, um. I just would don't, I don't want to leave them out just because they don't own property, they might not own property or have. Or have a business currently. Something, something that.
Well, and, and I'm wondering if. If we. Because I mentioned to you, my experience has been that it's typically residents. Or, you know, people live or work in or own property in the city that they serve, but. But we do have that orderly annexation. Agreement, so theoretically. You know, we might be able to expand to include, like if they're in that, with that.
Well, and Chris.
Fair, or my annexation agreement is landlords. And the city. That's run the township, right? Township, right, those individual landlords that like say border media city limits, you know. I mean. That's going to happen whether or not we have. There'd be a public hearing and all that, you know, so probably. Can make comments for that type of situation too, so.
I'm just saying in terms of trying to bring in some township people. That. Might not otherwise be included.
I, um, just being on different boards, like the, you know, age friendly, um, even Gold Rush, um, even, um. The food shelf, uh, we have a lot of township residents that are already quite involved. In the city. Um. And very much know the needs and they have, you know, they. They have many towns, um. Real smart math guy on the township board right now, so.
You're thinking treasurer, you're thinking.
I don't, yeah, just, you know, there's, there's.
There is interest, no doubt, but.
And that, I mean, that doesn't make sense.
Chris mentioned this in one of our first meetings too, is that question was asked. And it was his experience that the EDAs that. The people that own the property from outside the city limits of, they can be on. There's a lot of business owners downtown that we have that don't live in the city, so, but they are eligible because they're taxpayers.
Right.
And with township people. They're not part of our tax base. And that's the only development is for our economic development is to help with our tax base.
Okay, that makes sense too.
So that's why. Yeah, I'm hesitant about. And I, the other thing is just is the Biden, the Minnesota statutes refers to cities. Doesn't refer to cities and townships, it refers to cities, so we don't want to get our EDA in a position of, I don't think it would ever happen, but at the same time, your statute's written.
You gotta follow those.
Keep it physically.
Yep.
To taxpayers that own their property, so.
And the other thing that you mentioned was, was with the P and Z and, and I think that that would be advantageous. To coordinate somehow with, with that, you know, one of the members off to that, to take a look at.
And maybe if it was just a report, maybe if they weren't on the board, maybe they should come to the meeting, give us.
Saying, I, I think it would be very important to that because it pulls everything together, which is what you want to have.
Well, and, and as you know, I've tried to bring in, um, not that you didn't have it before, but, um. Bring the fire chief in to occasionally appear before council and make a report as opposed to just. All these written kind of things, but, but to have a presence too, because. You know, they're important to, to what we do, um, we need to get somebody from first responders. The thing is, you know, Dan covers all, all three now, but, but to the extent that we could start bringing in some. Other faces too to do some reports and even on the, the planning and zoning. If we, you know, in addition to getting their minutes, if we have somebody that occasionally quarterly or whatever appear for council and, and. Do that.
I think there could be requested reports, you know, I, um. Took the liberty of just starting putting together my thoughts and work plan and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be touching fire, first responders are input. Parks committee, how do we pitch help with our amenities in the parks and just, um, looking for grant opportunities. For all those different committees, so I think we're gonna, the board itself will touch a lot of those committees.
Right.
And, um. And if we did, if we did assign one position or one of those five could P and Z, well then we're just. Possibly demanding somebody that could really help us out on the EDA board with certain. Talents that we need for, to fill those offices too, so we don't want to. Not that we shouldn't be considered of that, but at the same time, I think we need to make sure we have the right people on the EDA board as well.
Right, and that's not to say, um, like on page nine of the handbook. There's a like organizational chart and it talks about, you know, kind of the. In addition to the EDA board and the executive director and staff. You can have subcommittees that are, that are going to expand the reach of, of the work that the board can do. Um, much like as a council, you have these other committees that are, you know, gonna help carry the weight as well.
Okay, off committee type thing.
And then for each, you know, I'm, I'm envisioning that for each of those subcommittees, you probably have somebody from the. The board itself serving as lead or chair on those subcommittees.
It's. We're, um. There's a lot of things that's happening in Orinoco, we're kind of. Getting our feet wet real quick here and so we don't have to rely on a lot of experiences from other EDAs and, and. Both good things and bad things to look at with EDAs, so I'm sure there's a, a lot of lessons learned and that's what Chris can help us with as well.
And one of the things, you know, that you want to do is. You know, this is, this is a group that will then. Basically serve in perpetuity, right? So you want that foundation to be really strong and, um. And, and this decision-making process that. That you're going through is. Is important to, I, I know you, I know you feel like perhaps this has been going on way too long because you started it and then it stopped and then you're picking it up, so it seems like. You've had this gap of inactivity, um. I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we set that, that part aside and, and take it from. December of last year when we, we, uh, brought it up and, and. And make it seem not so long, but continually moving forward.
So speaking of moving forward, should we set our special?
Oh, yeah, that's why I had my calendar.
So like I said, I'm on vacation on the twenty third through the twenty seventh, so. Um, the twenty second is a Wednesday night and we try and avoid Wednesday nights, but the twenty eighth. It's a Tuesday evening. How would that work for everybody's schedule?
Makes sense, we'll catch it before it gets to be too much past our, our meeting, so I think that's a good date.
Are you gonna have jet lag or anything?
Okay.
Are you gonna have jet lag coming back or anything or, I don't know that works.
I'm not going too far, oh.
Hey, that works.
On what Arizona, but it's not, I can handle a three hour flight, so the twenty eighth, um, you want to do a six thirty?
Mm hmm.
Time frame, okay.
That's our special.
So at that meeting from an agenda standpoint, we will, um. Maybe setting enabling resolution will be done on the twenty first, but it'd be on the twenty first, okay. So the twenty eighth would be, um. Either looking at. The appointees that I'd consider or depending on the number of applications, I guess.
I think you're gonna be, you do. I can get you the applications in advance of that so that you'll have them and then do the interviews on the twenty eighth.
And how does that process work? Is it long, it's open, I mean?
It's, it's a public meeting and they're not employees, so you can't close it for that reason and it's. Not a legal issue, so you can't close it for that. Um, I don't know if you want to just stagger them or you want to do a, I don't.
I know you remain have twenty of you also.
I know, that's the thing, uh, let's be hopeful and think that way, um.
Or do we make the decision once the, once all the applicants are in and the deadline is there? Do we make the decision, to Rylan's point, if we get twenty of them, we're not gonna want to do twenty in a night? Or are we?
Well, and you don't, you don't have to interview everybody, you can take the applications and interview, you, you know, just like you did with the, you know, interview every single person who applies for a job.
That's true.
So you could.
Can we discuss on this twenty first?
Yeah, so you'll.
And a meeting. And figure out how we want to do it depending on how many come in.
Well, I think that was, our, our meeting is already so jam packed on the twenty first, I think is what Sunny was.
No, I'm just saying we would know how many applicants we have.
That's true.
And that way we would know where we can make a, a more informed decision of how we want to do that on the twenty first. As to try to do it now. You know, and then I think it'll fit in, it won't take that much time for us to do that.
That's true, yeah.
But with that said though. I understand it, tell me if I'm wrong, so let's say we have twenty applicants. Rylan. Do you go through and say, okay, I'm gonna take seven of them because they meet the criteria and we'll interview these seven or these ten? Is that the way it works or do you have to interview all?
I'm gonna, okay.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, so one of the, one of the things that we've talked about tonight is. Determining some base criteria that people want, we want to fulfill. So in essence, you could do some scoring a little bit, um, and then that will determine. And, and the way I've always used scoring and I'll just throw this out there is, okay, so if you have. A scoring sheet that allows for a hundred points, you know, they need to reach at least X. You know, sixty or seventy percent to even qualify for the interview process. So. That, and that piece, you know, I can certainly work with Rylan, uh, but I, I do think it's important that as a council as a whole. You look at specifically what roles, what backgrounds are you looking for? Specifically that, that you want to serve on the board and that's not to say that other people might not. Be in one of the subcommittees where their talents, they can still contribute and their talents will still be appreciated. Be in one of the subcommittees where their talents, they can still contribute and their talents will still be appreciated. But in terms of actually serving on the board, um. You've narrowed the field, so to speak.
Right. That's what I was asking, oh, if we have criteria, then you know who fits in what slot, you have your buckets and then.
Right.
You wanna get as many involves as you can.
Right.
Okay, with, with, it's, uh, I'd still like to have time to open up to see if people have questions or understand and. See what we're doing. We've got more of a, of a handle with what we wanna do as council. Just with the knowledge that we've learned about more about the E D A or C E D A. Uh, but I think that other people, because a lot of people weren't here when we were doing it before, to open it up and just. Can answer questions or.
So Sunny, could you, um, summarize our approach? Send it out to council, make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, so.
I think we all have a general flavor, but you start documenting, you may be thinking of more things to add that you.
I wanna clarify who, who is going to make the. Scoring or who, you know, is that something that you will do?
It's, it's up to council.
So do we need to discuss that tonight before we go? Like what are we?
Years of looking for.
Right, like what backgrounds or what, you know, um. Is that something, cause when else will we do that? On the twenty-first?
Well, a, and if I might suggest, since we, we've set, um, February seventeenth as the deadline for applications. Um, if you can, and when I score, I don't, I don't score as they come in. I score at the same time so that I'm in the same frame of mind, um, in terms of evaluating. And my perspective stays the same. So perhaps if we say a deadline by the end of the month, where each of you can. Um, forward your thoughts to me, does that make sense? Um, what can be looking for, what, uh, specific things and, and keep in mind. Um, that page six recap of.
Officer, staff, powers and duty, those are the positions.
Right.
That's where we need to have. Significant attributes related to each of those positions, I guess.
You know, engineer.
As much as possible.
When I looked at engineering, is that something that we would use our engineering staff? Or to help us with, like C E D A and our, you know, the hired.
Well, if you look at it, I, I don't know what, what, what C E D A has, they might have people that are available as well too. Cause we're, we're, we're paying them, right?
Yeah, so that's kind of what I was wondering, which, you know.
But I, I, I don't know if we're getting ahead of ourselves on that or not, on trying to figure those details out at this point. You mean you're saying if somebody have engineering qualifications that there are?
That would be for anyone.
Well, that's true.
Right?
Yeah, change here in my background, that's, that's true.
But to answer your question, once the board decides, you know, if you have a project that's going to require some technical expertise. It certainly makes sense to, um, either, you know, decide to use a city's engineer. Or to go out for an R F P that's gonna be good for excellent repairs, you know, cause you'll, you'll operate. By and large as a separate entity. So with all that that entails, in, including. Audit, I'm just saying. So, so that piece is there. But in terms of, you know, what, what you're looking for in terms of the board members. What criteria, what, what three threes, what two or three things would you be looking for? Um, for people that, that might fill these positions, cause keep in mind, once you, you're not. Naming, the council is not, you're making the appointments to the board. The E D A board itself will determine who's gonna be the president, who's gonna be those office holders. That piece is not.
We just wanna set it up so that there's the proper.
Right.
People in place. So, end of January?
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, two or three things that you really want to see in your, your board members, um. Keeping in mind what's.
Okay, I wanted to do.
And the only other question that I have in terms of developing the enabling, uh, resolution is. Are there any limitations to statutory powers that you would want to withhold?
So did we talk about limiting all powers to? Council, in our, in our discussion with Chris, I feel like he mentioned. That some cities work as an invite, it would be more, it would, we're thinking of doing the combination, like advisory slash working on their own. So to me, that means, yeah, we'd be limiting some powers. Um, which of those are they?
Right. Um, and one of the things, um, that, that you talked about. Um, I did try to get him somewhere and do this, do his presentation. Okay, so that's kind of one of the things on page two. The different government organizations that you can have. The first one is an economic development commission. And that one is strictly advisory to the council. And words that we're talking about at the bottom of the, the actual E D A authority, um. That has more unless you want to limit them. Statutory, the E D A has all the powers. To begin with, and then you can, council can limit them. It may be helpful and I apologize for not sending it out too. I will resend, um, the resolution that Chris provided. So you can all review that again, mark it up.
Perfect.
Make your notes, bring your notes to the.
Bring the rain doors.
You know, I had to transfer the entire book, like it's thirty, forty pages, whatever. It's really, um. And Chris kind of alluded to when he was talking to us about just all the different things an E D A can do. Land and buying land and loans and, um, a lot of it's, has to go to council, but the point is that you can generate a lot of. Support information for business developments, um. Transition loans to demonstrate to a bank or financial institution that. The Orinoco E D A supports this and they use that as leverage for funding. And so I think there are some really. Important aspects and functions of an E D A that. Crashing your surface here, so I think there's a lot of. Good things to come out.
Right.
Okay, um, are we, you hit a retain on the agenda that you wanted to?
So in that resolution, do you need to know that?
This was just gonna be a draft resolution and it will include all that, but if you, if. You have more time to look through the handbook and then, um, determine what, what powers you might not. Want that they have.
I thought maybe the housing redevelopment authority, I think that's probably something that will, sometime.
Um, I think. The, the standalone H R A is going to be able to, um. Get federal funding for the different housing programs. Conversely, an E D A without the housing piece. May not be able to do as much for like homeowners that, that, that. We, we want them to fix their problems up so that it doesn't become light, um. As opposed to just staying with business and, and the economic side of it. That's why I, where I see that.
It seems like they go hand in hand.
Right.
And ultimately down the road, they could be divided as well.
Right, we're not there. I think we should keep those together.
That would be very impatient.
So just to recap, the timeline or the, the, the dates, tell me if I'm wrong. So I've got on the seventeenth is our E D A application deadline.
Yes.
Twenty-first is the enabling resolution.
At the regular?
Their regular meeting.
Yeah, regular meeting. And then the twenty-eighth at six-thirty, we'll have a special meeting. Um, and we'll do the interviews. And then by the thirty-first of this month. Uh, the council will give you ideas in terms of criteria or our thoughts in terms of applicant criteria based on roles.
Yes.
Coming out of the meeting on the twenty-eighth, we will establish our board. On the twenty-eighth.
No, I don't think, cause the, the committee's gotta put the board together and it's not gonna be at that time because you won't be able to meet. As a group, but you'll.
So they'll have a, the March meeting then?
We'll. We will assign the board members, but we won't have assigned positions.
Okay, that's, you know, but that's what I'm saying, cause you've gotta, that the E D A has gotta.
Right.
Do that and you're not gonna do that on the twenty-eighth, cause they're not gonna be.
We'll appoint members but not positions.
Yeah, that's what I'm kinda like, yeah, but, but otherwise you can't do the positions, yeah.
Okay.
Is, well, and. Um. I'm gonna say you, the twenty-eighth, you're going to do the interviews, you may or may not actually. Name names, because you, you know, depending, I mean, you, you may want time to digest. What.
Yeah, that's.
What the individuals.
Yeah, and maybe talk as adults.
And it, of course, it depends, cause, um, I already have five applicants or applications completed now. So if we get no others, then obviously that is a time you probably would interview all five of them and. Probably could name names to the board. But if, if you, you know, expand that. If you get ten or more, you, you may want to, um. Even based on scoring, if they're close, you, you know, give benefit of the doubt and go for the interview and then have time to. Not do a serial meeting afterwards, but just internally, then when we come back together as council. Then, then when Ryland wants to make appointments, the mayor wants to make appointments, I'm sorry. Then it, it can be with council support. So that maybe is at.
But we don't know.
The March meeting.
Questions? Mayor. What you? It's March twenty-first. So I think you're, um.
I will be going from that.
It's a March one.
We're on vacation, that, first twenty-first, yeah.
Will you be joining remotely? Will you be joining remotely?
Yeah, I probably could.
Okay. Finish with A B and C there under next step, last item was, uh, the bylaws. So the bylaws, we have the option of council adopting them or delegate to the E D A board to put the bylaws together. Seems like there would be an E D A. Board assignment to do, but. What are your thoughts? I think the bylaws, I think Chris explained to her the bylaws are pretty, not, uh, boilerplate, but there's a lot of. Similarities with bylaws from one E D A to the next E D A.
I think it's, I'll let the E D A board take a look at that and see what you come up with. We need a final approval to go through council, pretty easy to do it that way, but let them work on it. And then bring it to council if, if that is an idea, at least you guys would develop what you think is correct.
With the help of C E D A. And Sunny, yeah.
And I think there was some examples in Chris's information to the bylaws, which were.
Lots of it.
Page and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Detail, cover the hot spots, nice ones.
Yeah, I think between the information that Chris has given you already and this handbook, I think, I think the. It paints a pretty full picture of where we're headed.
Yeah. And the last item, uh, before any questions, schedule the next E D A meeting and that would appear, that's sometime in. March. Late March or early Aprils.
You need to find out when you get the members that there are for E D A, what day is available for them that works. So that you can set that, that time, cause right now you don't know what their schedules are like either. There's no train to. Set that, I think would be difficult.
We can't decide that tonight.
I'd say early April.
But I'm just saying with, with the people that there are, so one night's a good night for them to, to, to meet, so.
And I, I would have to check with Chris, cause he would be at that meeting too.
Right, absolutely.
It would make sense to wait until everything is through the twenty-first of March. No, it's through the twenty-first of March after.
Alright, that meeting.
That meeting, it would be, make sense to begin our first, our next, to have it in April. Me, us.
Um, at this point, if there's any questions from anybody, um, please step to the podium or. Yeah.
I guess, I got a question on, uh, uh, what we're talking about, cause you talked about maybe the board would have. You would be looking for a criteria each of you were looking for. Is that gonna be made? Public, what you're looking for, um. Don't know, in other words, an applicant or puts in or whatever and, um, I was kinda curious, I'm kinda curious and I. That's it, criteria, yeah.
And criteria, at the point, I guess sometimes is. When you are looking for the board on this, are you looking only for professional? As I said, listen to you, you guys talk, it's like specialty areas that you've got. My understanding there's, if you have a board of seven, two will be already on, that leaves five. Left for the board, if you do the seven, which I kinda understand, that's where you were headed, um. With that, if you're looking for a lot of specialty people, you leave a lot of people out of it that could bring something because you're looking. I, as I heard, like for an engineer, well, you know, an engineer to serve on a thing, more likely might not have, because it's a volunteer program. Uh, type situation and they wanna give that time. I always think it's important to look for people that are more dedicated. You can have people say you want, but if they don't show up or not dedicated, it kinda goes. Right downhill, or you don't know how dedicated we are. And the other thing you talked about, maybe the township. Or someone outside that, I truly believe that if you're dealing with Orinoco, at least you should have, be a property owner. Or resident of Orinoco, kind of be on the board because you have skin in the game. If you bring people in. From a whole different area that doesn't, they can have all the expertise, but if they don't have skin in the game, they can make a lot of decisions. they can make a lot of decisions and they never pay the out the end of the deal of what goes on and whatever they present because they leave it on someone else, I move away and I add this to the taxpayer, I add this to that and other boards and that's never made sense to me because they don't have any skin in the game. So I always felt that's important. Uh, if you're going to serve on a board, there's for some way you have skin in the game or it directly could affect your decision could affect you. So that's I guess that was just my question. And I'll be honest, I put I was I put in one of the five that you said they have. I, you know, like I said, I to know, I guess that night um to speak for the podium, if you have questions or more, a person give you more of a what you've done versus putting it all in writing. I mean, you could write a book for someone and I don't believe in that. I mean, it's more just if you have to serve on the from the podium, if you ask question, a person can give you a little bit more background of what their skill level, what they've done in their career. And I'm retired and it makes a difference to whether you've got time to really serve on something or whether you're so busy at work in your career that it really affects what or that's just my my thought if when you when I heard you talk about if you go just to specialty people, that pretty much leads you to a pretty limited board on you might estimate a piece on paper, but that's all you have.
So
Very good, thanks.
If if I could follow up with you, Jan, so what what did you think of the application itself? Because one of the things that that I was clear in wanting is you know, if selected, are you able to commit the time necessary to prepare for, attend and participate? So we really are, in my view, looking for not only certain skills um and and background, but really that dedication um and and wanting to bring out the best.
Right.
Or.
In your application, I think your application is good. Like I said, when you ask, are you willing? I put, oh, yes, I mean, how much more can you explain? The point is, if you ask, I guess the night of the board, as you as you sit as a group for anybody that applies from the podium, then you you could ask that question, are you are you willing to do that? And say, yes, I am. And the reason I am is because I'm retired, I have property, I have this, I have that, and I take an interest or whatever we're doing. You can expound on your answer more. I always like to, the interview process is always good because you can actually hear the piece of talk watch my language and understand the questions asked where piece of paper, I could write you, I'm Superman and I can leak tall buildings, everything else, put that all down, you get there. And the person is, well, this is our person that showed up in the book. Four foot tall, a big clown and a person, and it doesn't fit what you wrote in the application. And I I I was kind of, so sometimes when you can ask and see those questions and something like trigger your life's mind, the applicants in the podium said, well, I mean, I just saw something I would like to ask that apple because he brought to my mind where it might not be.
If you could not mind me.
No, I don't need that. I don't need it. Anyway, I'm just, you ask.
Good, good points, very good.
And I do that, and um and it's just my thought process, my learning to talk to you guys because you you take people that really have an interest, that are local, really have an interest in what they want to see is diamond in the rough. Or not who I believe is. The potential is unbelievable if it's here, that you can develop to do that, but you've got to do it in the right manner and the right way that you keep control of how you want your own move forward, not a developer that comes in and creates a mess on your hands and walks out and leaves you holding the bag as some places have done. And I I I can't say enough about the bridge nowhere up here, they come in with this grand plan and they left everybody holding the bag on the on the plan up here. So that's just, thank you very much for your time, but I just.
Just to answer just another comment too, you know, people that um people that do interviews for jobs for the council, for your business, you know, you ask certain questions, you just want to I mean, that's kind of, I see that as the criteria to see how somebody would respond to those type of questions versus giving those questions out and you're going to tell me what I want to hear. So you really got to watch sharing the criteria because you don't want to um you just want to see their reaction, how they respond, because you're going to use that as far as your personal evaluation, which is how I approach interviewing and because going to see how they respond. So that's probably why. And and looking at the application, I think you know, what experience do you bring to the E D A, your time commitment? Um, I think those are very worthy answers to reconsider, you know, so um there's my two cents with you, so.
Right, you've earned your time for listening, I guess.
Very good. Yeah, no, it's a fair question.
Very good.
Something that I was kind of seeing here too, I see with with uh something like you were talking about the timeframe and stuff like that. You know, like the meeting times, that stuff would be drawn up in the bylaws, you know, that's going to take place. You know, how they want to set that up. So I'm sure they're going to be electing new officers each year for their you know, be a part of the bylaws. They did elect a new secretary and this and that each year.
Yeah.
The bylaws that they would like.
Which is what's in there.
When the bylaws are.
Definitely the times out of the proof, most of that.
Yeah, they may not have meeting times in there until that board is met and really they might, I don't know. If we don't have um meeting times and um dates in our bylaws for Gold Rush.
Bylaws that be put together by the council and probably join meetings with the council, put that together and that was that.
Right, and then a- as you mentioned, the the bylaws aren't may designate, may or may not designate within that document, but certainly on an annual basis and setting your calendar, you will want to determine a set date, time, location, so that and and that is reviewable manually or in a way as you wish, because even um Gold Rush is considering moving there. So it it can be adjusted, but but then the bylaws need to be amended too, so.
I think it's also important, I served on the planning, zoning, rock, just for the field of Board of Appeals. The area we had to re-elect the new officers and some people got very comfortable to keep re-electing the president, the vice president all the same position. And the second year into it, I said, this doesn't make any sense to me because if they leave or something happens, how is the rest of the committee ever gonna know how to run a meeting and become that leader? If you all sit back here comfortably and, yeah, it's just easy, I can just show up and there, these people will work. And that night I said, well, I don't agree with that, I'm going to vote for, you know, put someone else, I could have her pin drop in the room. And that's what I said, you all have to become involved in this committee over, you you said the terms are six years, two years, four years, whatever. But eventually, if you really want to be on that committee, you should take some more responsibility as an officer at one point of your term. It's some role there to step up to the plate and do it and and I think that's always important with a committee.
And I think too, I think you kind of addressed what Dan was saying about people all basically having skin in the game, but didn't you say that there's a a statute or something saying you have to be a taxpayer to be able to be a part of it?
Not according to Chris, I emailed him today. It's just what's we've normally done, but it's not, it's not, it's not required.
We, I think we're looking at at owning property in the city which would be a taxpayer, I guess, part of that one. And you know, and I mean, that that that's that's an important point too, because we're paying the taxes in the city, not the township. And so township agrees with something deferring the burden on the city and and you know, the people, residents of the city, not on them.
Well, it was, you know, just keeping in mind, that's one voice, one voice can't make a
No, I'm just.
Decision. It was just, it was just a thought I had because I think it, we have so many great people in the township that are committed to this community and do so much work in the city, so.
And and if I could add to that, I I'm thinking of that section of street over there by Memorial Park, which which is township, but it's surrounded entirely by the city. Um.
I I agree with Ryland, you know, have some skin in the game.
Well, and and I'm just going to say again, I don't think I think what we're talking about is who's going to serve on a board. I think the subcommittees, I certainly, I think the township people could be engaged in that way, don't you think? I mean, and broaden the circle that way.
I don't know if the subcommittees, we have to look at the bylaws, I don't think those subcommittees are mentioned in the bylaws.
Oh, they're just, they're just subcommittees and the actual structure of the board is that.
Any other comments?
I have a couple. Um, I don't think anybody knows me. Um, I'm Jeff Shuppi, I'm the owner of Shot Tracy Signs. Um I I have had a major interest in helping develop this community ever since I bought the building and you know, um I think it's, you know, like you guys have said, it's 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 a goal. I mean, it could be the gold rush here, right? It could be you, as a city, you have the opportunity to build it the way you want. It's a blank canvas, right? So um this is amazing that you know, I think Ryland, when I first met with you, you had said um you always had a goal to keep on moving forward and water came originally in two thousand nine and then now sewer coming and this is kind of a continuation of of that whole um process, which I think is is amazing. And I've always thought in in taking over and and moving into Shot Tracy that hopefully I can help with that. And then when this came along, you know, I I do have an interest. Um, my biggest concern for me personally um would be transparency. I've wanted to help develop the community and I've wanted to do more. So meaning maybe buy more land, maybe redevelop that property into something else and move the sign company elsewhere within the city or, you know, I don't know. You know, something I was looking at purchasing a building across the way, ended up getting outbid, someone else purchased it. Um, so I have a uh a very significant business interest in doing that. So seeing some of the conflict of interest in the manual, I want to be perfectly in the in the clear, so to speak, that I that it's not perceived as a conflict of interest if I'm basically helping the community, but I'm also doing things to put my investment behind doing that as well. So I don't know if that's a Chris question uh from a con- conflict, you know, for me to even apply or even consider to being a part of it. Maybe it's better if I'm on a subcommittee or something like that. Um you know, I don't know. So that's that's a major hurdle, I guess, that I would have to overcome in my in my own mind to to even apply.
And I'd be happy to visit with you about that too, Jeff. I I I'm just going to say upfront, I'm big on transparency as well. So the fact that you would even disclose that before applying is is admirable and and as is the case with elected officials and appointed, what often happens is it for those decisions that might create the perception of a conflict of interest, it would, the ethical thing to do would be to recuse yourself from loading on that particular piece. So um I I personally, I wouldn't let that um dissuade you from applying.
I think too.
I'd like to echo what Sunny just said, the fact that you would bring it up tells me that you are a person that would be transparent.
Yeah.
So what are we? And I think that, again, what you say is that conflating calls for you sit on, if there is a even the appearance, whether it may or may not be, you just tell the board at this point, it could be an appearance of conflict of interest, I'm going to remove myself from any decision in this, and that is all transparent upfront. So no one ever could say to you, well, you made the decision. No, I didn't because I stepped off the board. Um, I can speak when I bought my property, Jane Prowse was on the board, her son sold me the property. She stepped off the board for that vote and did all that because she didn't own it, but her son, and she felt strong enough that there could be the mere appearance, which I, whatever, I commend her, whatever, she did that. She sat in the audience when it was all done, they go, whatever, and she went back and sat. And I think if people know that upfront, and know what you are and you're not doing that, I would welcome you to put in in your application in for this because as long as you're upfront. Yeah.
I would, I would. And I like that involvement that you have with that and the community and you've already you know, put down that this is what you wanted to do with the community and and yeah, I think it's a diamond in the rough, there's no question about it on on what this community can be.
I I would say keep in mind your your concerns, your only effect your requests, what you want to do, maybe if a competitor with your same business. Right, that would be the only two things that really would really.
And what you would bring to the board, just your business experience on areas outside downtown development. I think that would be very welcome with anybody's experience.
Yeah.
But with the element of having skin in the game, it's going to be challenging for anybody to be, you know, to be completely separate from and removed the possibility of conflict of interest. And so
Yeah.
Everybody's going to deal with that at some point in time, I think.
Okay. Um, the other thing is the the time commitment does scare me. I live, I I live in deeper girl fights. Um, and I commute down three to four days a week. Um, but in the application, talking about, do you have the time? You know, to commit to it, what is the time? You know, what it may be in the criteria that you all lay out, you know, from what are the must haves and the nice to haves and the you know, whatever you feel is is a bad best fit. Um, maybe you put a rough estimate of what a time commitment would be on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis. Um, you know, things like that. Also, reading, you know, I have amazing people that that work at Shot Tracy and I'm far from um someone that takes care of the details, you know, I don't you know, people manufacture things, people take notes and do a lot of things that I just don't do, just, you know, number one, I'm not really good at it, but number two, I just don't have the time. So if it's you know, it it probably narrows the opportunity of what position I would even want to be affiliated with. You know, of five open positions as well. You know, like if if it were talked about like, well, we have an opening for the secretary now, I would probably say I'm I'm out. You know, I just, or or you mentioned treasure or, you know, things like that, that I just simply know it does not fill my and I may have the time, but I wouldn't have the concentration to fulfill that type of thing. I don't know how you overcome that, because maybe there's five people just like me. You know, then what? Um, but I would, I would rather walk away and have someone else fill it better if that's the specific role than me try to just be on the on the board and and do that and really let the board down, you know. So I don't know how you overcome you know, overcome that.
That was an excellent, that's an excellent comment. That goes along with our comments from our previous meeting is we have parks and trails and P and Z and we have a challenge with filling our current committees. And we're going out asking for more volunteers. So it's it's a challenge and and I think opening up till the seventeenth and getting the worry out there, but it's it is a challenge and it's it's unfortunate, I don't think it's unique to Ornoco either. I think it's just the time is higher than the times and.
Well, and the time commitment is interesting because since it's new, we don't know, you know. And I would assume as as you start anything, the time commitment um will only grow. So we can guess and we can have Chris guide to help guide us in that and maybe you son even have an idea of the time commitment.
Well, and I'm thinking these early stages are going to be more organizational and really. And really developing the work plan for the future. As opposed to, um, okay, we're aboard, we're gonna meet here and boom, we have a development project to look at. You know, it's not gonna happen like that, and the other thing that that will come into play is Jeff has these staggering terms. You know, it could, you know, I mean, if, you know, it allows that opportunity for maybe you wanna take the shortest term. And kind of feel how that works and and go that route, um, just a thought.
Sunny question, you you're taking, talking staggering terms, uh, you're going to two, four and six year term. When the two year term expires, that'll be become a six year term.
They start with one, one, two, three, four, five.
When the term expires and they all become six.
Right, that's what I mean.
So it's staggered from the start at one, two, three, four.
So question then, as you, a point you bring up as a treasurer and secretary, can you hold your meetings? As, I guess I'm not quite sure how this meeting is being recorded, so. As a job of the secretary, do you make sure the meetings are, or you gotta sit down and type them all out? And then produce the agenda and same thing is, um. As a treasurer, can a person rely on the C D O, my point is, you gotta, you gotta put your visor on and open up your book. And have a book and sit down and a ledger and actually be an accountant to to go down and do this. Because. Then you almost have to, one of the people on there almost has to be an accountant. And doesn't really bring any knowledge more than, hi, I'm the accountant. And doesn't bring a lot of knowledge to the rest of the board, which is, to me, is not serving well on the board because. I gotta put my visor on and and my thing, I'm I'm trying to writing checks and make sure that those, everything is right that way. And same with the treasures, and I gotta make sure that I write all the meeting minutes down and do that.
I would guess, I would guess.
I I don't, I don't know, so that's my question, I'm asking is.
You can't answer that because the board's not made up that to answer those questions, so.
Okay, okay, well, if I was saying, if you were in that position, could the city help that person in that position, how?
Separate.
Don't, you don't know, I just.
I'm saying, well, I'm, I guess I'm saying, I think they're separate, U D A's functioning is separate from the city.
I think at one time when we were first meeting, and we were talking about this, cause we're paying a fee. And so we get time for a person to be working here. Of of it, and I think we had talked about them.
That's a possibility is to have a C D staff being part of.
Be part of like the secretary part that there is behind it.
And just, you know, to clarify treasurer, you're not writing checks during meeting, you come with a report, that's all prepared in advance, and you come with a.
Said in the manual that you would be writing checks and it would be signed by two members of the E D A board. To do that, so that tells me the treasurer is writing the check and signed by another board, a a board member according to the bylaws. Who that board member would be, and you're responsible for making all the payments and bringing all the money in.
Just like any other, just like, just like Sunny does now, just like, that's just, but yeah, that's why we need to.
Well, and and just, I see your hand too, I, but just to point out, you know, the accountant isn't just bogged down with the E D A. Activity, that accounting experience is gonna be. A great help to the board as a whole as they determine, you know, the the activities that they wanna take on.
Yeah, thank you, um. As far as giving a detailed criteria for a position like treasurer, you may want to do something like that. Because um and and I don't know what the requirement is for something like E D A. But this is personal experience with having just gone through a campaign. And being very good with keeping books and actually having a background in that, doing it in restaurants. It was nothing like being a treasurer for a campaign, you had to file reports with the state and you had. All sorts of things that you're required to do that are above and beyond basic bookkeeping skills. And so it would probably be move you to figure out what the structure is for that treasurer. And who they are accountable to, if it is something that has to be reported to a state entity or whatever. That you want your treasurer to know that going in, and that's gonna become a a huge. Um, it's gonna become a huge point. Thank you. But but I'm just thinking that if there's anything involved that you're reporting to an entity. That is an official state entity or something like that, that's gonna be more involved than just being able to. To balance a a register.
I think that's a good point, and maybe that's, as we get into the book and and. Yeah, uh responsibilities, the acting treasurer doesn't, is not necessarily, says in the book that it doesn't need to be a just a non-member. Doesn't have to be a member, so there's accountants in the city, just like we use for Gold Rush. They take care of all those tax forms that need to be sent in every year, we give them a stipend, but at the end of the year, but the point is, I think that's what we need to search out if we don't. Have that experience in the board.
Because, yeah, the, cause the money you would get, was I read there, says you can hire or do some things with it, it's their own energy, so. The treasurer, or be able to hire someone in that position to make sure all those forms, cause I know that we got state forms and. In organizations, you don't file on time, then the state can come back, you can bring charges against you to do things. And that really eliminates a lot of people that wanna have that position. Kind of responsibility, so I, it's strange to look into and find out more information. This is a great way of bringing this up after meeting tonight.
I think the go, I think our goal would be, I mean, just on other boards, what is a really great way. Is to have that professional person, maybe not even part of the board, and then to have a somebody named a treasurer and they go back and forth, and that's the two people, and they're the ones that are. That's how we operate for Gold Rush, and that's how I I would see us operating this too.
That would make very much sense, the treasurer oversees your account, doing it, so that you know that the timeframes are being done and that person. Full-time job, that knows how to do that, who does it, you just make sure that you break that record.
Same same with the executive director, generally put together the agendas for the meetings. The secretary will keep minutes.
One more thing regarding, I've I've been on boards before where, um. Resources were not necessarily known, you know, up upfront, so in other words. To to take a position on the board. You know, you you're probably your best candidates, you want, you want to come in and hit the ground running, right? So you you want them to, they were, you know, you're going out, you're finding developers or, you know, you're you're coming up with your master plan and your vision. And then boiling it down to your next steps of where to go and what to do and so on and so forth. Um, I have a lot of questions surrounding. Other E D As maybe and what their success has been in in doing this, is this. Um, something that we can reach out to Chris directly with a lot of questions about how this all goes? Or is this something that in the interview process, um, on whatever day you say, maybe Chris is present? And then we, you know, have the opportunity to interview him, it's not just.
Well, there's um, and I, what I've done myself is just gone out to the uh, the Pine Island E D A. Dover, the Yoda, Stewartville, Byron, there's a lot, everybody has E D As and you can get a pretty good idea. About the type of work they do with looking at their agenda, their minutes of the last year, two years. And you can see that they're very seasoned and uh flowing money, buying properties. Um, working with landowners, developers, um, so there's a lot of. Um, there's a lot of things out there that people are doing that we just need to learn, and so that's where. No doubt we'll have to rely somewhat on Sunny's experience as well as a C D staff person too.
And and Chris, just so you know, is what a vice president of of C D. And and he comes with a lot of knowledge, there's a lot of other members that there are within C D. And you don't get a Chris type person up in Pine Island, you get a different type of a person. But just with 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 working, you know, um. Up with Pine Island and that, the E D A has done a tremendous job in these small communities. You know, and that's what you need is somebody that way to do it, until we were ready with the sewer project. That's why we kind of put a halt on it, we were kind of visit the, we got the cart ahead of the horse, we gotta get it done the right way, but. The timing is is now for what this community can really do, but they're they're great.
I bet, like your idea of having Chris at the interviews, would that be something?
Well, that's that's good, remember we have, um, we have a contract with them for a certain number of hours.
Sure.
And so that's why I'm here tonight and not him, cause like I say, I want him to. To really do the more heavy lifting kind of in terms of guiding the work plan that. Process that that's gonna be important to you, this organizational admin kind of side is. I'm totally comfortable with that piece, um, but. So, I mean, but again, that's council decision how how you want to utilize that as well.
But there is money that that's in it that we put in for the E D A, you know, I mean, it's funded and we're we're ready to go as a city. To do this.
That's a great question, numbers.
I was looking at at that too, cause I thought it was, uh, is it one day every other week that we have? You know, so so that's where we're we're at for, you know, one person here. You know, every every other week, but for a full day working on this type of stuff. And so there's somebody that's here that's working all the time, whereas that's just on the board to to do it.
Yeah, my my questions are more so, if you're gonna attract developers, what incentives are out there? Not for the city to provide or, you know, the county even, or may maybe tax, things like that, but. Grants or, you know, things like that, that when you, if if nothing's here right now, I mean, I don't wanna say nothing. Shot Tracy's still here and, you know, a few businesses, but we do truly have a playing slate, so then what's first? What, and then someone has to look at all the numbers saying. The traffic on these certain roads, you know, all the studies that people do when they consider developing and how many eyeballs are gonna be looking at their. Properties and all that kind of stuff, um, I get that's all out there, but then someone's gonna have to be first. And then it can kind of go from there, right, you can.
That's the exciting thing about this is that with the sewer project, I I've been approached by half a dozen developers. The first thing they ask is, when's the sewer, when can I connect, now we can tell them that it's October of twenty twenty-three. So there is a a lot of interest in the land, uh, that borders all of our city limits, only on the south side, of course. But I do think there is, there is a lot of interest, both commercially and residentially. Uh, we also have our availability to us at Stan Tech's Planning Services. The P and Z has used them for various projects and um, as we get in, cause they're the ones that put together. Future land use map with the P and Z back in twenty twenty-one, so I think we have the groundwork for. Addressing some of your concerns and issues, but there's still a lot of unknowns, we don't know when that will all happen, but there is interest. All right, there's um, other questions, I make a vote for the meeting adjourned, a second. I'm sorry, Skyler, did you have a question?
No.
You wanna ask?
Just respecting respecting your time.
You're so quiet and I I'm not, that's not, don't take that the wrong way, it's, I expected.
Like banana table and you don't wanna hear more.
I am disappointed that we didn't get cookies tonight, that is. Hold a favor, say, say hi. Thank you, eight sixteen.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
And thanks for the input, those are good questions and good comments.